It is 6:00 PM. Welcome to the school board study session of Monday, February 26th. All members are present except for Director Burnick. And I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Thomas for the purpose and agenda.
Thank you Chair Franz. Purpose of our study sessions is to have dialogue with our board on key topics of interest and allow us to really unpack and roll up our sleeves a little bit, ask questions and get a thorough understanding of various topics each month. And tonight, we will be working through a couple of things. Program and staffing reductions and additions discussion, given where we're at at this point in the year. Give you an update there. We'll give an overview on how we differentiate instruction to kind of meet the unique learning needs of our students. We will go over a proclamation regarding social workers appreciation work, Appreciation Week, School Social Workers Appreciation Week. And then we have a series of first reading policies that we'll cover with the board. And then close out with a strategic plan update from our last community engagement session. So that's the scope for this evening.
Okay. Well, we're right in line with the working document that wasn't included in this time, but it's the same one as last time. So why don't we go ahead and get started right into the oversight of operations and the first topic?
Sounds good. Turn it over to...
There's no... Yes, I'm sorry. I should have just mentioned that there's no public forum or no speakers signed up.
Gotcha.
So we have this as a standing board agenda item for this work session, just to give any updates at this time. We don't have any updates, any additional reductions or additions that we're recommending at this time. We're still working through the approved reductions to figure out how we can best restructure and realign the limited resources we do have to best meet all of the student needs. So at this time, we don't have any additional reductions that we're bringing forth for discussion.
We are monitoring the expenses for the 23-24 year, just to make sure we're coming in right where we expect to be. And then working on our enrollment reductions for next year. And we'll have an update on enrollment at the next board meeting, March 11th. But other than that, we're just kind of closely watching things as we're going along.
Any questions? Hearing none, let's go into our next topic.
All right. I will watch it and then I'm going to call a few guests up. Felt it was appropriate to give an update to you as a board in a study session format and give you an opportunity to hear from some of our talented teachers on the front line who are doing work related to meeting the needs of our students. And so I'm going to call a few folks up here. And we strategically have folks who represent a variety of grade bands, a first grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, and a seventh grade teacher, who cover a variety of topics. And I'll call them up and then I'll kind of set the stage on each of them individually. So folks would come up, but we're going to maybe slide a chair around here.
Okay.
And two of them wore the uniforms tonight that we discussed.
I'll check my email before I left. I'm sorry.
Yes. So first of all, to my immediate left here is Vicky Hoseniger. She is a seventh grade math teacher at Twin Oaks Middle School and has been in our district for a number of years. I'll let her introduce herself a little more fully. Kristin Jordan is a first grade teacher at Glendale currently and has also been in our district and taught in a variety of settings. And Ellen Abney, currently a fifth grade sage teacher and has served in a variety of roles. So as they introduce themselves, I'll let them share other roles or their time here in the district. But they represent some of the many, all of the great teachers that we have, doing the work of providing a differentiated experience for our students and have expertise. They're here for specific purposes and reasons, as I mentioned, by their experience. Kristin in particular is one of our most talented folks in the reading, meeting the needs of our students as readers in first grade and other experiences that she's had. And she's certainly going to be integral, along with other teachers, as we move forward in our work, analyzing, reading curriculums, and making decisions about how to best meet our student needs moving forward. Ellen, as I mentioned, is a teacher who's teaching our fifth grade sage this year and as a part of that, is teaching our, one of our pilot teachers in our math program, our CPM math program, to meet that need of our students in that class. And Vicky also is a pilot teacher in our math. And so obviously, in the secondary, our teachers are focused in a particular content area. So the intent is to bring a diverse experience set in front of you. So I'll let Kristin start as the first grade teacher. We'll begin there. And if you'd share just a little bit about your background and experiences in other class settings that you've had across the district throughout your time with us, and talk just a little bit about what that looks like in your classroom today.
Okay. I'm Kristin Jordan. I teach first grade at Glendale. I've been in the district since 2012, my first year I taught in the Sage Academy, and then all my other years have been first grade. So I have the most experience with that age group. Do you want me to go through...
Yeah, why don't you share just a little bit?
I am used to talking to six and seven-year-olds. And talking to a bunch of grownups is a little bit intimidating for me, so I did. I have some talking points here. So I was asked to share about a literacy perspective. And for me, reading instruction has changed a lot in the last few years. It all started when we adopted our Foundations curriculum a few years ago and is so different from a lot of the other reading curriculums that we had used. And I immediately saw students building a deeper understanding for phonics and just being able to decode words much easier. And as I became more familiar with Foundations, I saw a big disconnect with what we were teaching in Foundations compared to the texts that we had for students during our reading time. When we're doing reading, we still had a big push for predictable texts or repetitive texts, especially in those early grades. And so they might be reading a book that says, "I see the monkey, I see the gorilla, I see the hippopotamus." The problem is that those big animal words, they can't decode, right? They have advanced phonics patterns that we haven't taught yet. And so I was noticing that we were working so hard during phonics to be able to decode these words. And then during reading time, they were spending all their time reading these predictive texts and not getting to practice those skills. So I started looking more into science of reading and discovered the importance of decodable texts. So texts that most of the words are at the phonics level that they have learned so that they can have that confidence to decode those words. And then also the need to build phonemic awareness. So students need to be able to rhyme and to be able to substitute the beginning of words and ending of words. And we weren't really doing a lot of that either. And so I kind of restructured a lot of what I was doing during our reading time. And now I kind of do, most days I do two sessions and I have students separated into four small groups. And so I'll do things like building phonemic awareness. We'll do sound boxes where they're tapping out the words and using minilitives to help them with hearing the sounds. Right now, a lot of us, we're working on blends and going from three sounds to four sounds can be very tricky for kids. And so some of my students at grade level, we're working on those things. Other kids who need a little bit more of a challenge, we're working on multi-syllabic words and trying to separate them into open and closed syllables in order to decode. We're working on building vocabulary. We're working on deepening comprehension. And so there's lots of different things that we're doing based on the skills of my readers. And I just wanted to share my most recent FastBridge data. So I had one student who, in the fall, scored, he was my lowest score on FastBridge. And looking at his growth from fall to winter, he scored in the 99th percentile for, from start score. So if you look like, let's say he scored a 20 in the fall, they will compare that start score nationally to their winter score. And then, so he scored 99 percent better than other kids who also scored that 20. And then my student who had the highest score in the fall, his growth percentile was in the 97th percentile. So I'm seeing that using the science of reading has really made huge progress, not just for those struggling readers, but for all readers. One other percentage I wanted to give you was that 96% of my students scored typical or aggressive growth on the FastBridge test from fall to winter. And 4% of my students had modest growth and 0% showed flat growth. So I've seen a lot of progress with the little changes I've been making, and I'm just really looking forward to seeing what the Read Act will do to improve reading instruction across the district, so.
And as Kristin talked about, the phonics foundations has really addressed that aspect. What we have begun to see, however, is that we have our students who are progressing through our system, who have now had the three years of implementation. We're seeing that the other components of the science of reading are the components that we're going to really need to focus on as we get into the upper elementary, intermediate grades, fifth and sixth, fourth and fifth grade rather, and then move this work forward. Comprehension becomes a bigger area of focus and the science of reading is well-grounded in helping us take that vocabulary to that next level. And that is work that we're going to be continuing to dive into as we move forward. And again, we'll be updating the board with our progress in that front. We just have launched the committee coming together around this work and really starting to dive in to analyze the different components of the Read Act, as well as the different trainings for our teachers and the resources for utilization. So more to come on that. So with that, I'm going to transition up the path here. Ellen, could you just, for context, additional context, share your history with our district and different roles that you've played?
Yes, I have been around the block here. I think it's been 10 or 11 years. I started as a reading interventionist, serving at Westwood, and then took a break from the classroom work and was a peer coach for four years, I think. And now, last year, jumped back into the classroom in Sage, and this is my second year in fifth grade Sage. And as I kind of thought about what I wanted to talk about, what struck me as actually part of my transition, I think during my peer coaching time, we started to kind of see a real disconnect between kind of the age-old Sage on the stage, one person standing in the front of the classroom, becoming really all the people in the classroom that are learning are talking. And so the majority of the people that are talking are, not in my case because my class is very tall, but they're shorter than the teacher, but several of my kids are very tall. So that what we call academic discourse is a really key thing, I think, in my classroom to differentiating because when those learners are talking, using academic vocabulary and talking to one another about the specific task that they have been given to move them into their new learning, it's really, I'm really able to meet them right where they are based on the questions that I ask them or the questions that I maybe don't answer that they ask me. So I believe that that differentiation, that academic discourse kind of has four kind of key components. Critical thinking, which we all can agree is essential for fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, everybody. Even Kristin's seven-year-olds need to use that critical thinking. And so ways that my kids are offered the opportunity to talk amongst each other and think critically might be after we watch a short video of a tiny percussion set and a narrator reading the poem "The Midnight Ride" by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow and reading about Paul Revere's famous ride, I can ask things like, "How did that poem make you feel?" Turn to your neighbor and talk about the words in the poem that caused those emotions. How did the percussion impact your emotions? Okay, now, write a quick paragraph for me about how Paul Revere might have felt. Did Longfellow match that in your opinion, or did Longfellow not? So we can think about all kinds of critical thinking through a five-minute video and a seven-minute conversation. Another key component is that reflective encouragement. So as often as I can, get my learners thinking about and talking about what they just realized or what they just learned, or what didn't quite go like they thought they wanted it to go. That's when I know they're in that zone of proximal development and they're learning something right now. And I can give a nudge with a question like, "What evidence led you to believe that? Is there anywhere else in the text that the author tells you something that makes you believe that is correct?" Right? Or for math kids or science kids, "What other methods have you considered so far? What happened when you tried that?" So letting them think through those answers involves their brain actively thinking about what they're learning, which we know is going to make it stick in that memory longer, which is ultimately what we want them to do. The third component is classroom norms. If I walked in on the very first day in room 303 and said, "We are all going to share our ideas and talk, and nobody's going to laugh because I say so," it would not happen that way. So from the very beginning, we all come together and we create an environment in which we're all learners, we are all making mistakes, mostly Mrs. Abney, and so long as you do it respectfully, you are welcome to point it out at the right times that I have made an error. And then we'll fix it because that's what learners do. And our classroom constitution lays that out. We are here to learn and grow and make mistakes. And so long as we use these three questions to guide us, "Kind is it true, is it necessary?" Then we can all talk about learning together and making mistakes together. And I think that makes them more willing to give a go at a math problem in front of everybody or say, "I felt really scared because I think this is a big thing that's going to happen here. This is the war, you guys. This is a big thing." And I think they're willing to say that. That fourth kind of component is student participation. My goal is always to get as many people talking, hopefully only one at a time, but talking and in the course of the discourse. So to encourage people who might not feel comfortable yet saying their ideas right out loud, I can ask partners to talk for a minute. And then I can say, "Hey, it's your turn to tell me what you heard from your partner." That's my way to get that partner's voice in the room till I know what the partner is thinking. As a math team, I can say to that team of three, "I need you to come to consensus as to what your biggest, best move was for solving the problem, and in two minutes, be ready to share that with everybody." So I'm going to get seven teams that are going to give their best guess, which means I had 21 mathematicians' voices in the room right there in that little four-minute exercise. And then it's interesting when you put a bunch of fifth graders who, for the most part, love to read in a book circle or a book club, very interesting things can happen. For one thing, the depth of discussion is remarkable and it gives me goosebumps to the day, every single time. I'm very excited about what they see, whether they're making a connection to their life or a connection to the theme or a theme from this book, kind of sort of matches the read aloud from October, don't you think? Yes, I do think. Thanks for noticing. And then one way we invite other kids into that is sometimes they'll be very rule-bound and they'll be bothered because everyone hasn't talked four times. So we'll talk about, "Well, what's a respectful way to say, 'Vicky, we haven't heard your voice for a while. I wonder what you think about it.'" And it's getting their sentence starters lying off their tongue so that that feels normal. And then I hope they come to middle school and do it in high school and use that same phrase and so on and so forth until they're grownups, right? Living with all of us. So I think that that student discourse and the questioning just builds a really rich environment where everybody's needs are being met kind of by each other, which I think is a really cool thing.
Vicky, if you'd share some highlights. And we have, Vicky's a math teacher, so her focus is going to be strictly in math. But can you share a little bit about your background, experiences, and evolution of time during your 20-plus years in the district?
Yeah. So as outside, my name is Vicky Hoseniger. I teach seventh grade math at Twin Oaks. I also have three Lakers of my own, one who just graduated, so also know kind of, you know, the journey that a student takes in the district. So as Dan said, in my 20-plus years, I've taught all levels at the middle school. I have always taught middle school and always math. And I, during that time, I've noticed, especially previous to this year, that students, I think, really struggle with the idea of productive struggle in learning. So in middle school, letter grades get introduced and we have many students who become very hyper-focused on the grade, and they lose sight of the fact that productive struggle is a normal process in learning. And so, you know, sometimes I would hear things like, "Well, you didn't do an example exactly like that one, so I don't know how to solve this one." And that was concerning because obviously, you know, I would tell them, I'm like, "I can't possibly show you an example of every single math problem you're ever going to encounter." Like, I'm teaching you the skills that you need to hopefully go out and have these tools to pull out to solve these problems. But it just really wasn't connecting with the students in that way. And so as Dan said, I am piloting the new curriculum this year, or what might be our new curriculum. And I have noticed significant changes. Not once this year has a student said to me, "Well, you didn't show us one like that." Because the curriculum we are piloting is very much about depth of knowledge. And so it does require students to think in a slightly different way than what they have maybe had to in math in the past. I would say a lot of us at the secondary level are probably teaching in a pretty traditional manner, the way most of us probably remember doing math and not downplaying that at all. But there, you know, the skills that people are looking for out in the real world are just not always completely meshing with the way that we are teaching. You know, it was sit and be quiet, don't talk to each other, here's how you do it, now you kind of repeat that. And so students felt like, "If you didn't show me exactly how to do one, now I'm incapable." And what I've noticed is this is really focusing on giving them the power to say, "Here's a problem. Try it. What do you think? Let's talk about it. Let's share our ideas. What worked? What didn't work? What's more efficient? What's not more efficient?" And it's giving them the opportunity to see that there's a variety of ways to see math. I'll be honest, even as a teacher, I have learned connections through piloting that I'd never learned as a student in 20-plus years of teaching. Because they ask me questions, "Oh, my gosh, why does that work?" I don't, and sometimes I'll be honest and I have to tell them, "I'm not really sure because no one ever told me why it worked. I just followed a rule and I just kept doing that rule because someone told me that that's what you do." And so this has really pushed them to be like, not only can you get the right answer, but then can you explain, "What does that answer mean? What does it tell you in the context of the problem?" And for some students, this has been a little bit of a learning curve because it is a different way of thinking, but it also allows me to differentiate in ways that I have never been able to do in my classroom before because students are constantly talking and sharing with the class. So I have gotten way more feedback through that communication with them, with each other, that I can address questions that have come up and I'm like, "Oh, so we have a little misunderstanding that's happening over here. I hear when you're discussing this, you're kind of coming at it in tunnel vision, but what about if x were this number? What if x is a fraction? What if x is a decimal?" And so I have actually found differentiation to be a lot easier than I was anticipating. I'll be honest, I went in a little skeptical into the pilot because it was something that was a little different, but I have been pleasantly surprised with the discourse that I see in the students, their willingness, like Ellen said, to take risks with each other and to share and to throw ideas out there. I think in the past, you heard from kids who felt confident that their answer was right, and now we're starting to hear from all kids that are like, "I don't know if this is going to work, but what about this?" And sometimes I'm like, "Yes, that is totally out-of-the-box thinking, and that's what we're, that's what we want. We want kids, like Ellen said, to be critical thinkers, to realize they have the power to solve a problem even if someone hasn't shown them that exact same problem before." And so I'm really excited about what I've seen in my classroom and where things are going. And as a parent of, I have three kids, two of them have been in, you know, the advanced math track and one is, you know, in what you would say the regular track. I have just really, I know from my own kids talking to them, that sometimes when things got hard, they wanted to give up because they thought that math was, "If I was good at it, I'm always good at it and I'm never going to struggle." And so I know sometimes students would kind of opt out when things got hard because they didn't know how to have that productive struggle. And I'm seeing my students kind of persevere through that this year, which is really awesome.
I'm going to lean on a personal example that you gave in a previous conversation that you and I were having on your own kids, and you won't reveal which one you were having this conversation with. But around the depth of understanding and maintaining that conceptual understanding as we move forward in our math, do you remember which conversation I remember?
I'm trying to remember a conversation.
When you reminded one of your kiddos that you can't forget it just because you took it on the test?
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yes. I won't say which kid. Might be my second one. But she, I was helping her with her math. She's in high school right now and I was helping her. And of course, she expects that her math, her mom, who is a math teacher, knows everything immediately. And when I don't, it's kind of like, "What's wrong with you? Why don't you know this?" And I was like, "I'm like, I'm sorry. I haven't done various methods of factoring in like 35 years. Like, help me out." And I said, "Well, I know you already took your test on this because I remember you doing a factoring worksheet a couple of weeks ago." And she goes, "Well, we took our test on that. I flushed that, Mom. I'm done with that." And I was like, "Oh, honey, no, 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 no. That's not how this, this isn't how math operates." And I think to some degree, that is how students have viewed math. I took the test, I'm done with it. I don't need to know that any longer, not realizing like, they only know what's in front of them. They don't realize like, "Hey, that's going to come back around in ninth grade and 10th grade and 11th grade." And so that is the other thing, in the pilot, they do spiral. And so it constantly is bringing to the forefront those concepts that we have tested on already. So to remind them like, "This wasn't just important in chapter one. This is still important now." And the connections they can make when they see that something you learned in chapter one is still helping us solve something in chapter five has been really nice, too.
And I wanted to bring a particular example that Vicky had shared with me a few weeks ago in a conversation we were having as a concrete example of what we've been talking about with regard to the depth of knowledge and depth of understanding that the new standards require us to give our students that experience with. And I saw some nodding of heads from Kristin, I think it's aligning with some of the work that you have your first graders doing and certainly Ellen with your fifth graders. As our students progress through our system, that is the level of, in this case, mathematicians, but also scientists, also readers, that level of understanding that we are working toward is what I wanted, hopefully, to have an opportunity to be showcased here tonight by bringing some of our resident experts in the work. So that's what we wanted to share with you tonight on this topic, certainly open it up for conversation.
So, go ahead, Jess.
Yeah, I am. Let's start with outside. Thank you for being here, Vicky, Kristin, and Ellen. This is really great to hear from you. I have had, Vicky, I've had similar conversations with my daughter. With what you just said, like, what was important in chapter one is still important in chapter 15 or whatever. So don't flush anything. Couple of questions. One major one for Kristin, if I can back up to reading. Can you help me understand the decodable text that you were talking about? When you were, like, the sentences, "I see the hippopotamus, I see the walrus." What, help me understand what decoding words means. Help me understand what decoding words means.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't follow it the first time.
So, how, so we teach phonics in like a progressive way. And so, first, we teach CVC words, so three-letter words with a vowel in the middle. And so, when they are at the level of CVC words, the decodable texts would mean that it would be mostly CVC words that they could tap out the sound. So, I see that cat would be more appropriate than hippopotamus, because cat, they could tap out cook, act, right? And so, then it progresses. We teach digraphs, and then we move on to bonus letters and glued sounds. And so, as the phonics rules increase, then there's more words that are decodable, right? Words that they know the rules of how to solve. And so, the decodable texts that we have now align with our foundations curriculum. And so, as we move on to level eight of foundations, then we have books that match, and it has all the rules that we have taught so far. So, they have exposure to all those words, so they get to practice and have confidence actually reading those words. Most of our decodable texts are like upper eighty percent decodable. So, there still are occasional words that are tricky for them, that we usually showcase before the text. Like, you're going to see the word library in this book. This book is about a library, here's the word. But then, the expect, it really builds their independence that they can, most of the words sound out on their own.
That makes sense. Thank you, yes, it does, I appreciate that. Vicky, I know you're piloting CPM. So, I know, and I don't know if this was across the board, so excuse me if it wasn't, but I know my daughter is also in a pilot for seventh grade. And we got a survey as parents, like, hey, what do you think? What's your kid telling you? What are you experiencing as a parent or guardian, as a family? What kind of initial thoughts about the curriculum so far? And wondered what you're hearing, you know, from families about, and I know we're gonna get into a lot of this, too, in teaching and learning committee and things like this, too, when we kind of look at this. So, if I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry, but since you're here.
Yeah.
What are you here?
I'll be, so, you know, the first set of conferences, which is usually when we get to have the most, like, one-on-one interaction with parents. It was so new. So, I do feel like, you know, there was a little bit of a learning curve, and I think, you know, something comes home, and it looks very different than maybe what a parent is used to seeing in the past. So, I think there were just a lot of questions around, like, what is this? Like, what does it look like? And I think the student, too, because they are collaborating more, having more academic discourse. You know, there isn't just one method that's taught. It's kind of like, any method that works is open. And I saw, I think, you know, it took kids a little while to get used to that, too. Now, I feel like we've kind of found our groove. I haven't, I've heard some positive things from parents where they're like, "You know, my child in the past struggled with math, and this, you know, has a lot of supports, even with visuals." And, you know, we think of visuals, and I tell this to my students all the time. You know, we think of things like drawing a picture, you know, especially sometimes my advanced students, they kind of feel like, well, pictures, that's for babies, you know, that's what younger kids do. And I'm like, "As a math teacher, you wanna see what I solved this? Like, look at, I had to draw myself a picture, I had to visualize it." And so, this has a lot of that kind of built into it. So, now I think kids really are seeing, like, oh, like, today, they took a checkpoint where we've been working with expressions, and we've been working with algebra tiles, something that we haven't used, I haven't used before in the past. And I said to them, I said, "I'm gonna put this, you know, these algebra tiles in the center of your table, and when you get to the expressions, if you feel like you want to manipulate it and use those while you're taking your checkpoint, that's fine." I was amazed how many kids were like, "Yeah, I need this visual," in all my classes. And so, I feel like now that we're getting into our groove, they're really starting to see some of the benefits of the visualization and allowing for a variety of methods. I still think, you know, there are some, there has been some feedback, you know, "It's hard to help my child at home." And I totally get that as a parent, you know, when you come in and you're like, "Hey, what are you learning today?" I mean, I do this on my own, like, before I came here, my daughter's like, "I don't understand these word, answer word things." And I'm like, "Okay, well, pull it out, let's look at it," you know? And so, it is hard to just hop in and know exactly what was happening. But I would also say, you know, this is a pilot. There's a lot of things that we as teachers have created as resources over the years for the other curriculums that we've had, that we just haven't had the opportunity to create yet. And so, I've been telling parents, send them to me, tell me, like, hey, they were stuck on five and eight. I'll address it, I'll help them in class, you know? So, that, I would say, is a work in progress. And I would say, anything is, nothing is ever perfect. You know, we're always gonna tweak things and change things as we go through it. So, just like it's the students and the parents' first time kind of going through this, this is our first time, too. I know some of the other teachers and I that are piloting, we have been keeping, literally, every day I document, how did this lesson go? What would I change for next year? Like, this was great, this, this was a little, like, I could see that they weren't quite getting the, like, connection there. So, I think in time, it's gonna become even better, but...
And I'll speak specifically to that feedback that you, as a parent, had the opportunity, because your child was part of the pilot, to submit. We are actually bringing that together at our meeting here on Wednesday at middle school to all of the middle school teachers. And our pilot teachers are gonna share their experience. We're gonna take a look at that data that's been collected from our parents and our students who've been part of the pilot as well, and leading us to that decision, as to the direction we're going, that decision which we will share in March Teaching and Learning Advisory direction and the results of that work. So, that is coming, and that is where we're at in the process. The other thing that Vicky spoke about, I think we've learned this at the elementary level as we've been implementing this year with our new curriculum. We've had a couple parent nights thus far, and I think at each of those parent nights, we have heard this question of similarly, this is a new way of doing math. How do I help my child at home? And we're continuing to get familiar with the resources that we want to, that are either available through the curriculum or that teachers wanna create as guidelines for parents at home. But in a similar manner, having that conversation, this was actually a conversation we've had in a couple of smaller segments at the middle school level. We're gonna, that is one of the big questions we're gonna have to ask ourselves and have answer for and provide for parents. Regardless of the direction we go with a new curriculum is, anytime you make a change, it looks different. And how do we get our parents up to speed on what to expect at home? Work to work there will be comfortable.
Sure.
We'll just go down the line, I guess. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. You happened to get the nicest night of the year to show up, so...
I was like, my wow!
Sorry about that, sorry we didn't arrange the one. Thanks for all your examples. I love the examples of concrete evidence of things that you are doing and differentiating in your classroom. I think what I'm curious about, and not to be negative, but to be real, and to understand how we can be helpful, you know, I wanna understand better the challenges you face. And I hear you talk about workarounds and different things you do to try to, you know, meet kids that are at all levels. But it's also okay to talk about some of the challenges and how we can maybe alleviate them for you, or try to. And I bet they're all different, because we're all at different levels and teaching different things.
I think it's, I think, I think differentiation is just so logical. It's almost hard to parse it out, to say, like, which part is tricky of it. Because I think if I, you know, when you have multiple, I have three children of my own, and you just differentiate at the breakfast table, because that's what you have to do, because A arrived like that, and B arrived like that, and C arrived like that. The classroom is very, very similar to that. And sometimes, Kristen, you heard talk about, like, four different groups of kids. And that happens, I think, you know, fairly frequently at that lower level. It just, so it's hard to parse out. It becomes, one thing that's really helpful in the curriculum, the CPM curriculum, as I'm a pilot, too, like, that curriculum offers, I say it wrong every time, author's vision?
Yeah.
I think it's called the author's vision, and those authors have, to extend students' thinking, try this question, this question, this question, for students who might be struggling. Try this question. And that is beautiful in that curriculum, to have those resources there. And then, I think, as always, time to talk with colleagues, to say, okay, I mean, I happen to be the solo sixth-grade pilot person, so I didn't get the chance, but in like a fifth-grade curriculum, to say to my colleagues, okay, what's our go-to here for this type of learner, or this type of learner? And then, really, like, when you get, you know, three or four experts on differentiation together, time to hear their voices and try those things out. That's another really important thing of differentiation, because the more ideas you have, the bigger your toolbox gets for things to say out loud to the kids, really.
I have a couple. One of the big ones is some of the testing that we have to do in reading. And so, right now, we have to do, like, in January, we had to do the Fontes and Penel reading test. And it takes about twenty minutes per kid, if you get their level right. If the text is too hard or too easy, you have to do another test, which is another twenty-ish minutes, and it's one-on-one for all your students. And so, in order to get that testing done, it basically blocks the whole month of January. So, instead of doing these reading sessions that I love to do, I'm sitting one-on-one testing during reading, while the other kids are independent reading, or on their iPads, or doing some other type of activity. So, it really kills a lot of that differentiation time that I would like to use. And then, the bigger concern is for next year, we have dropped the testing for fast bridge, too. And so, for reading fast bridge, that's ten minutes per kid. For math fast bridge, that's seven or eight minutes per kid. And so, if you add that in, too, like, it's just, it's an awful lot of time to be meeting one-on-one with kids, especially when I feel like I would be a lot more beneficial teaching. Yeah. And then, the other, sorry, one more. I utilize CSO a lot during reading. It's almost like, so I meet with two small groups each day, but it's almost like I can meet with three, because I usually give one of the groups I'm not meeting with a CSO assignment. And so, if I'm doing one of those decodable lessons, I'll do two days with them. The first day, we'll work on reading the text, the next day, we'll reread, and we will work on comprehension. And then, that third day, I'll post something on CSO, like a list of decodable words from that passage, or a couple sentences. And so, they'll record their voice reading that, and then I can go back and listen to it and see, ooh, this person needs a little bit more practice with this skill, or this one sounds great, like, maybe we need to shift groups. And so, losing that ability to use a CSO next year will also be difficult, to not be able to differentiate quite to the level that I would like to, so...
I mean, I would echo a lot of what Ellen said, time to collaborate. Most of the time when we do that, it's kind of our own time, you know, at lunch, or just in the hallway, quick, like, hey, how did that go? What are you trying for this? And then, probably, I mean, the thing you're gonna hear from every teacher, I think the one thing that makes differentiation easier is just, you know, smaller class sizes, which I know right now is just probably not gonna happen. But when you have ten groups you're trying to get around to, and hear and observe what's happening, and, you know, asking them, okay, what about this? Or, you know, extending this question, or, you know, offering this. It's harder to get around to ten than it is to eight, you know? So, but, I mean, I think every teacher would say that.
Yeah, and it's fair to say. And so, I'm hearing time and resources, both those things cost money. And that's, I'm saying that out loud to our community, is what I'm actually saying. I think, when I hear you guys talk about these things, I, and everything you list, I get excited. Like, I can hear the passion in your voices, I wanna be in your classroom, you know? So, thank you.
Well, and to piggyback on, great question, by the way, and to piggyback on that question is, like, could you have parent volunteers come in and help with that assessing? Or is that not something that a parent could do? We did that when I was at Aspen Academy, and I'm just curious of that. You could utilize your parent volunteers as a resource that doesn't cost financial resources?
To my knowledge, we do not have permission to do that.
Could it be data privacy, maybe?
Well, the F and P assessment is, it's a little bit more complicated, where you would need to be trained.
Yeah, there's a training element that would have to happen. That was the first thing that came to mind for me. Not insurmountable, or not able to be overcome, but something we have to consider. It wouldn't be like a different parent come in one day and totally different parent another day, somebody that could commit to that time.
Parent volunteer.
Yeah, because right now, we have like a testing team that comes in, but they are trained in order, for the fast bridge portion. They're trained to do that. I know that our reading specialist, I think she takes two days to, like, do thorough training with them, so...
And just for clarification, that looks different in the kindergarten and first-grade classrooms than it does in the fourth, fifth, seventh, for sure.
I've done an iPad starting in second grade, so the teacher time is a lot less, starting in second grade.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that. As a parent of a Sage student, my head sort of goes to Sage. And I wanna know more, I'd like to learn more about the CPM implementation at Sage. And the reason that I'm asking this question is because when I think about the students who are in Sage, the twice-exceptional, the special-talented gifted students, many of these students, I would just say, speaking from my own experience, have anxiety when it comes to engaging with other students. And so, now, the CPM curriculum is very heavy on getting these kids to engage with one another. What's your feeling on that, or what are you seeing? And what kind of impact is it having on their, either the classroom experience or their learning, based on that challenge?
I started out the year explaining that math was gonna be different. And I tend to make a lot of analogies, and I said, "I think it might feel like an itchy tag. I think it might bug some folks more than it bugs other folks." And I said, and also knew for me, and I hadn't taught math for a minute, and it was second grade, that last minute that I taught it. So, I said, "So, we are all in this boat together, and it's gonna feel different in a bunch of different ways." And one of the beautiful parts about CPM, they have a chapter zero called a prelude, and it sets your classroom environment, and how it looks when you're at your whiteboards, and how it looks when you're doing all these things. And the kids have different roles they have to do, and there's sentence starters for that role's responsibility for what they say. So, I acknowledged right out loud, this is gonna feel different. The other, so you talk about, one, Lisa, those kiddos that don't like to collaborate with one another. There are also kiddos who really, really like to be first and fast. And they kinda don't care about accuracy too much, because first and fast matters most. And in it, CPM is a really big learning curve for those folks. Because what I'm asking you to do as a mathematician is to look at a way that Millie solved this ratio table, and decide whether or not Millie's right or wrong, and write about why, and how you know. That's very different than doing, you know, ten problems in a row of changing fractions to a common denominator, because of that. So, I was very surprised, three weeks in, when I, and I asked them, "How's it going?" "Love math, love math, love math." They really like it. Now, all of them, no. Many of them, yeah, they really do. And their skills in the collaboration, their skills in writing full sentences about how they know those two fractions are the same have grown by leaps and bounds. It's unbelievable. And also, I think, because of the way that we build 303, they're still okay to say. So, they are put randomly in groups every day, different groups of three, every single day. And it's pulled by sticks, or a deck of cards, or whatever. And they'll say, "And today was rough."
They'll say, "Is that, is that part of the curriculum?"
Yep, yep, that's part of the curriculum.
Because I can tell you that structure, also, for a special, twice-exceptional kid is also really important, so I can see where that would be a challenge.
Yep, every day, it's a different way that we, and it's just the way that it works. And some will say... And some will say, at conferences last week, I had a kiddo and I said, you know, how, she wrote, one thing she wanted to continue to work on in fifth grade is collaboration. You do a really nice job of faking that. I really can't tell. And she said, you know, she kind of smiled, she was there with mom and dad, and she said, it's just really hard. And I said, kudos to you for acknowledging that it's really hard. And kudos to you for doing it. You're doing a great job. And I said, are some days harder than others? I said, because we're not going to name any names, but I bet there's three or four names that are hard to work with. And she, of course, smiled at me and I said, and that's okay that you noticed that. As a 10-year-old to realize that, and it's never going away, right?
That's what I was going to say.
It is never going away.
More than just math skills, this is like.
Right, it's very much like, ugh.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of ughs and they're out loud and that's fine. So long as you're not bumping anybody's feelings, you can be frustrated by this job. I have lessons that I think, woof, is this one done yet?
Well, and I, I mean, to piggyback off Ellen a little bit too. I tell students, collaboration looks different for different people. Some students, you can tell they're most comfortable when they're in their group of four and they're talking. But then when we share out in the class, they still hang back a little bit and that's okay. I can still see that you're participating and you're, you know, engaged in what we're doing in your small group. You know, but I would still say that's better than sit and be quiet and watch what the teacher's doing. And so there's, I think that helps lessen the anxiety a little bit too. It doesn't make it go away. I mean, I think all three of us had a little anxiety coming here tonight, you know? So, you know, my son said to me, well, you talk in front of people every day. And I'm like, it's different, you know, that's students, you only half listened to me. But, you know, so I, I would say it looks different for different kids. And, and that's another way we're differentiating is to recognize it's not going to look the same for every kid and how they engage.
I think too, the thing like, and part of it is that that is just very much how I teach. Math feels the same as English Language Arts in my room, feels the same as science. It's just how we roll. And I can see the kids that it's harder than, I can use proximity and I can be nearby. And we can practice or we can, we can come out and we can have a little consult if things are getting really tricky or somebody needs to move. There are ways to kind of do that and I, I feel like everybody feels comfortable.
Thank you. I think, I have a question for Dr. Edwards. Are we going to be putting the curriculum out for the CPM out at district service centers so that parents can come in and take a look at it?
Yeah, once, once a decision is made about the adoption, that's how we do that with bridges as well.
Okay, oh, I think it was out before because we had both of them out during the pilot.
Ah, that's true, we did because we had two to choose from at that point. If we decide we're going in this direction, we certainly would. If we had, we, we didn't have another pilot. The team, the middle school teachers did not identify a different resource to pilot. So once we would make a decision and a recommendation, we would certainly have resources in there.
Can you provide a little feedback on how this was chosen, the CPM? And like just a little bit of background on that for our community? Because I've had some questions about that and.
Sure. I'm going to defer to Vicky just a little bit and see, because together we're going to remember.
Okay, I was going to say, my memory might be a little fuzzy, but we had the district math committee and we kind of looked at our vision and what we, you know, wanted students be able to do.
But the math experience we wanted them to have. And then we looked at multiple resources. And when, and I think it was three that we looked at.
Three or four that came and gave presentations.
Last spring.
Yep.
And then we, as a, then the, the middle school, and, and we had both the high school and the middle school engaged in that. And the middle school then came together around that and said, boy, that's the only one that really.
Well, and I think there were several middle school teachers that had colleagues in other districts too who have taught with CPM for many years. And so I know there were some, I think, that even went and observed their classrooms and, you know, just talked with them about their experience. And I think that also was kind of something that helped at least us go, okay, we want to look at this more.
And, and one of the things with piloting is we never, and this was the same and was consistent at the elementary level as well. We never forced teachers to pilot anything. And so we had certain folks who stepped forward and said, I'm willing to pilot. And we, and we wanted to make sure to the best of our ability to have a cross-section of grade, all grades if possible. But then as we looked at the particular tool that we were looking at specifically, CPM, there was a training element and a component to that that was a requirement in the summer. And there were limited options as to when that training could occur. And that frankly provided.
That kind of narrowed it down a little.
That narrowed it down a little bit because as a pilot district, we weren't able to dictate when the training was. We had to participate in other trainings that were being made available. And so that kept a couple of people from being able to pilot. And, and, and they collectively as a group said, we have faith in the folks who are piloting. We had Ellen, sixth grade, and she's been engaged with some, some conversation with the sixth grade teachers. We had multiple seventh grade teachers, two at Twin Oaks, one at Hidden Oaks, and we had an eighth grade teacher at Twin Oaks. So we felt like we had a cross-section. We did end up getting somebody from each grade level willing to do so.
Thank you. I think what, what I'm curious, and we can, this can go back to teaching and learning committee. And I apologize to have so many questions. I think because I serve on that committee, I am. What I'm really interested in hearing more about, and I'm really happy about the foundations that we've implemented. And I think, you know, our timing on it was good, obviously, but the Read Act. And what I would really like to know, and I, I don't know if you've heard the podcast Soul the Story, but my concern as a parent is that we, we don't have years, how do you say? How do you say? We don't have a lot of years to make the wrong decision with this curriculum, the CPM curriculum. And so what I want to, what I'm really interested in hearing about is really the science behind this curriculum choice of, in other districts or from the, wherever, where it has been successful. Because like I said, I, we don't want to get into a soul the story of math in our district. I just don't think we, we have, we want to take that risk. So I'm curious, because I'm hearing mixed things and I appreciate the question from both students and parents about this CPM and for some of the re-instances that you, you spoke about. So anyway, that's what I'm curious about.
And I think the alignment with our vision, which was created out of the national standards and best practices in instructing math as we move forward, we found this to be a resource that aligned with that. I think the struggles that certainly we're well aware of that we have anytime you pilot and it's probably even more a challenge at a middle school because they compare notes, the students themselves, compare notes often with their classmates. And if one group of students is experiencing something and others are not, that, that comes to be. Elementary students, I'm making over generalizations here, but they're most concerned about what's going on in their classroom and their classroom alone. That's not the case for our, our middle school students.
And if I may, Dan, I also view, you know, having taught now for 20-plus years, this isn't my first new curriculum. I would say curriculum is very much a resource. And it is not going to be something that you just teach exactly the way it's prescribed, so to speak. I mean, you always tweak it. I mean, like I said, I know my colleagues and I that are piloting, we're already, you know, taking notes about what we're going to tweak and change to fit our classrooms and our students. And that's going to change, I mean, I'll be honest, from hour to hour, sometimes it looks different. Because I'm like, I tried that first hour, I'm like, ooh, I want to tweak that a little bit, but, you know? So sometimes I feel bad because my first hour, I'm like, oh, you're always my guinea pigs. I'm sorry. You know what I mean? But, so I would view it as, it's a resource. It's not going to be just, you know, because I think part of it is, even me as a teacher, I would say, prior, there was a lot of direct instruction. And I think that isn't as much and I think that makes students and parents sometimes uncomfortable. But there, I have seen ways where I can fit that in. And as a teacher, I can do that pretty easily, just using all the other resources that I have. I cannot come up with some of these like, I mean, this curriculum has a lot of, I don't even know how to describe them. Just different ways to view problems about the why and how does this work? And how is this connected to this? And that's just not how my brain operates. And so I view this as, that is a resource to help me visualize with students and to see the connections that I, quite frankly, I don't have that skill. I do have the skill where I can make up some distributed property problems right now and teach you all how to do it in, you know, in a very traditional way. But I feel like I can, I can still, I guess, embed that for lack of a better word into this curriculum as well. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. And I want to point out, both of you said it, Ellen and Vicky, shared earlier in their commentary around this, the learning that they are engaged in as, as seasoned veteran educators through this process, that they are learning right alongside their students. And frankly, I think that's a very healthy thing for our students to experience and see as well. Because you're right, after 20-plus years, you can put together a math lesson in pre-algebra because you're teaching pre-algebra to seventh graders for that long. But there were only just a few ways that they had to solve problems historically. And now there are different ways that we're teaching them to solve those problems.
I mean, it's been interesting because I've done a lot of work at home this year just because piloting a new curriculum is like feeling like a brand-new teacher again. And so sometimes on the weekend I'm going through and I'll say to my husband, I'm like, okay. So this is how it's been, he's, and it's interesting because he'll be like, oh my gosh, if this, if someone would have taught math like this, he goes, I would have been so much more engaged. He's like, I feel like I would have actually had confidence to know, because he's like, the things that you're having to work through, he's like, that's how my brain works. And I'm a little more type A, like show me the rules, show me how it works, I'll repeat it, I'll do it again. And so I feel like this kind of meet both learners.
Thank you. And I just have one last question. I promise that has to do with the Read Act. So foundations, are we, can you share more information about, are we proceeding forward with that curriculum? Based on the Read Act, because I know there are certain curriculums that the state says these are the ones that, you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, so, so that is not currently, in the initial review, was not listed as one of the approved. That is being, I guess for lack of a better word, challenged or reviewed further. The creators of that curriculum are asking for further review, providing additional evidence to the teams at MDE to decide if it meets that. And so we, we're awaiting that. And our committee will evaluate that as well as be looking at other resources that obviously the phonemic awareness and the phonics element of that is a requirement for any of the resources. And there is the additional, and maybe I should defer to my science of reading expert over here, but the, the other areas that are not tied to phonics and phonemic awareness, can you speak to that? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I know that currently we use Lucy Cockens units of study, which we know research shows is not best practice. So phonics is not, like foundations is not our full reading curriculum, it only covers that part. But I believe Witten Wisdom is the only approved one right now for like knowledge building, I think is the.
Comprehension.
For comprehension, yes. I think that there's several that are being challenged and so the list will be longer. But currently I believe it's Witten Wisdom is the one approved one.
So we'll be analyzing that as that work evolves here in the coming months. And with the hope that we would have a potential identification of some pilots that we would try next school year, if that is something that we can move forward here into spring.
I was going to ask, are those in our current budget? I will not ask.
With the curriculum that the state is man, not mandating, but I want to use the word mandating.
And it's been approved.
That have been approved because I will say, I mean, Witten Wisdom, it's, you know, that's one of them, like you said, and there's been some controversy over that one. They've given money back for it, so.
To a, to a level, to a level. And we have built that into our.
Extensively at the meet budget conversation at the meeting, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm curious what success looks like as the pilot continues. We have the parent survey that you're going to review. So before even making that decision on whether to continue and go all in with curriculum or whether to choose a different direction, what are those specific deliverables and what are.
Want to take a crack at that first or you want me to?
Um, you go for it.
Okay, all right. Well, first of all, I think the experiential contributions that our pilot teachers can bring to the table to that conversation, what they are seeing, what they are observing, I think is going to be a key factor in that. We certainly know and have gathered both, not only through the survey, the formal structure that we did with the parents who, students were in it, but also informal, as, as Vicky mentioned, for example, through the all-conferences and follow-up conferences and.
And emails.
Emails and communication, informal. All of that is certainly data that will bring to the conversation. But what success would be, a, a group of teachers, specifically in this case, middle school teachers, who say, based upon what we've heard from our colleagues, and again, when we were looking at pilots, we'll say, as we trust our colleagues, are looking at something that's aligned with our vision overall and based upon what we've learned, if they have a support, collective support. When we made the decision in the math committee, I don't think you were on the math committee, but when we made the decision at the elementary level last year, when we got together and shared all of that, it was unanimous and very clear through that dialogue and conversation that that was the right direction to go. And I think, well, we've had our challenges in implementing, as you do with anything new. To Vicky's point earlier, there are never a curriculum that's going to meet all components of what it looks like to have success in the classroom as an indicator. But what are the lessons that we've learned? How do we draw from those lessons so that we can prepare ourselves for successful implementation? Should this be the one that we move forward with? And, and I think the key will be having, and, and different than the elementary, our math committee was about 40 teachers. Our middle school, it's been our entire, not the piloters, but our entire team will come together to hear from their colleagues. And they've been hearing from their colleagues throughout this time. But once, and, once and for all, they'll come together, so we'll, they'll all be a voice at that table.
I have another question. Ellen, you mentioned earlier that the author's vision notes are really helpful for trying to decipher, how do you teach and how do you reach certain profiles of students? And then also sharing with kind of your cohort of peers. When do you have those opportunities to engage with your, your peers to even figure out what works? What doesn't work?
You know, this year we've really, the, the peer coaches and kind of the Q comp committee, they were really intentional this year of setting elementary, our student achievement goals and our personal goals towards math learning, which was a really phenomenal gift really that we were given. So that when we, when we meet with our colleagues once a week in our learning team meetings, we really focused on that math work. So I referenced the National Council of Teaching of Mathematics. They've got tons of resources about student discourse and problem solving and things. So we, you know, once a month, once one of us on, you know, my team, we take a turn once a quarter and like, hey, let's look at this article, hey, look at this, let's look at this video, let's take notes about where we can slide these things in. So that kind of intentional meeting, that once a week meeting is really important. A lot of the early releases this year have been, especially in elementary, built around doing that. My colleagues were, you know, getting ready and working on bridges. And I was kind of, you know, working on a little bit different thing, but super similar in the same thing where, you know, student discourse and what kind of things do the learners need for that? Those have been huge. And then it's like always, it's, it's in the lunchroom, it's passing between the, it's, it's texting Vicky a picture Sunday when I'm trying to correct a math thing and saying like, okay, this is wrong, right? Am I right? It's not right. Like, it's that kind of communication that happens behind the scenes all the time. So those are the specific ones.
Thanks for bringing up, because I thought of the early release and the learning team goal. I think those were really important lessons that we've learned in what I would call quite successful implementation this year. And I, I'm not, that's not me speaking, that's what I'm hearing from our elementary teachers. That the way we've gone about this has been very systematic, integrated with the learning team goals and the Q Comp. Tying that together and the focus we've given to the early release time. When the question was asked earlier, I think by Director Cosby around what challenges. Maintaining that time and that commitment to those monthly early releases is going to be huge. As we continue our implementation of math, bring on science at the elementary, getting ready to bring on reading a couple of years out. And at the secondary level, each content area, doing the work that, to provide that learner experience that's being described in the classroom, that time is invaluable. So.
Well, everyone has asked really great questions and I really appreciate all the information that, and the experiences that you've shared. I took a lot of notes on the questions and what was said. And so I, I think that the thing that really stood out to me, it's been something that's been being brought to my attention often as of recent, is the smaller class sizes. And it's just something that it stuck out to me when it was, when it was mentioned and asked, what are some struggles? And, and smaller class sizes. Again, I, it just so happens to be that I'm in a space and time where community members are talking to me about such things as the class size. So when we talk about learning, I love hearing the positives about new ways to learn. With anything new, there's always challenges and that is also very understandable. So I look forward to hearing more as things progress and, yeah, there, I, I don't have any additional specific question. I think that, you know, out of all the notes that I took, the one thing that I highlighted was smaller class size. And that's a discussion that I actually put for the end of this evening. So there we go. Thank you all for, for coming and sharing all of that.
Well, thank you to all of you. And I have spent some time with some of you already and I appreciate some of the information. And I'm quite frankly, really excited about what's been going on in our math program. A couple of questions that I had, one, I'm going to start with reading. We've always heard that third grade is the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. Now that we have foundations in place and we're seeing these changes, how is that? And being in first grade, you may not know, but how is that reflected upon that transition time in third grade?
I don't, I don't know much about what third grade looks like. But I do know that I, there are always some advanced readers that are coming in, even in first grade. And so I have kids that are reading at a second grade or a third grade level. And that definitely is the hardest part is trying to build the comprehension piece of it, of the learning to or reading to learn. So a lot of times like the tests that we give, they need to score a certain level on comprehension. And so we'll have students that can score like 99% accuracy, can read fluently, but can't answer the comprehension questions. So that's, whenever I have an advanced reader, that is like the main thing I'm working on with them. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it's actually, it's kind of exactly where I was going. Well, I think one of the biggest transitions for me, and this is as my years of as a reading interventionist and teaching, you know, many grade levels. There's a, there's that light bulb that goes off when they realize they can read. And then it's really, really very fun. Hopefully it's very fun and they get into the books and the P T C H and everything. And then, oh, it's Diary of a Wimpy Kid and it's great. And eventually, when that feels really comfortable, that's reading. And in my room, that's, that's called lowercase r-reading. It's just putting together all the sounds and making them into words. Well, then, when we're at school, I need to sometimes do what I call capital R-reading. Which means you are still actively thinking about everything you are reading. Today, they were reading nonfiction text or getting ready to write an argumentative essay. You have to mine, actively mine that text the whole time you're reading. Where have I heard that before? Was that in a different article, the same? Why is the author putting it that way? Is that a note I need to put down? Does my future writer need to know that written down? And it's convincing readers who feel comfortable that it's still an active thing. And I think third grade is kind of that time when we think like, okay, now I'm going to put this in front of you. Now tell me the main idea or tell me why the author wanted you to read that. And it's just convincing them that even though they no longer have to work at it, like maybe Kristen's littles do, they still need to work at it. And especially for maybe some of my saved learners who might have been early learners, that's a really hard bump to kind of bump into. And it's just convincing them and then convincing them through middle school and high school and then college, like, oh wow. This is what it means to read to like learn. So I think it's as they get comfortable with all the phonics and everything and then they realize, oh, there's more.
Well, I know that part of that is learning to read, hence the Read Act. But what the Read Act isn't really focusing on necessarily is that comprehension, that transition. And that's.
That's still a big pillar.
Those are the two additional.
Yeah, that's still a big pillar is that comprehension part, yeah.
Okay, so it is, because I, I saw it more as trying to get the literacy rate up from just understanding, being literate in general, not necessarily the big R comprehension.
Yeah, that's taking it to the next level. It's replacing read well by third grade. Read well by third grade was to the basic level of maybe to use Ellen's analogy here, the little r. The, the, the capital R is now taking it to that next level. And that's the, where we need to advance. And that's where we need our intermediate grade teachers on up through secondary, through high school. To be prepared to help our students take that reading to the next level.
And then another question, one thing that I absolutely loved that was stated, Vicky, is the emphasis on grades. Because that actually is kind of inhibitor to actually really learning. And obviously if they really learn, the grades will come. But it's going to be kind of a roller coaster for a while as they're getting the foundations for learning the content. So how have, especially in this first year of doing this and coming off of teacher, parent, teacher conferences and stuff like that. How has that been dealt with and what are your challenges?
I would say, I mean, I usually just address it with my students that, you know, the, the letter grade is a moment in time. Like, when we took that test, this is what you knew at that moment. Doesn't mean it is fixed, doesn't mean it can't change. You know, that's why we, we took the test. This is where you're at. And that's the beauty essentially of the spiral. Because our tests no longer are like, this is, we did an expression unit, the test is only on expression. Nope, we're going to bring back fractions and we're going to give you another opportunity to show us how are you now? Like maybe now that you've had more practice, now maybe you can demonstrate that, hey, I've got this. But it is hard because every family has different expectations around grades. And so sometimes that's challenging, you know? You want to tell students the A isn't always the end-all, be-all. But some of them, that's what they hear at home and that, that can be hard because, yeah, it's, I mean, it's that productive struggle. And sometimes giving them the space to have that productive struggle. And I know even as myself as a parent, sometimes that's scary. Because you're like, ooh, I don't like what I see in the grade book right now, but okay, let's hope it's going to get there, you know? But I don't, I don't have, I guess, all the answers to that. I wish I did because I feel like I could write a book and.
Well, it's kind of a mind shift, right? I mean, it's a huge mind shift for us as parents and you as educators. And I recently was talking to someone who is in medical school. And they were telling me that many medical schools are now moving to pass fail. And I had no idea. And it was to create this more of a creative learner, curious learner environment that you were describing. Rather than grade grabbing and trying to get into this certain research or this specialty. It's to genuinely create a creative thinker, critical thinker to problem solve, which is what we need as doctors, right? As humans. So I, it kind of, you know, when we're not looking at our kids' GPAs, like that's super rational. And it, it should be super rational either way, right? It's hard for us to do both.
It's encouraging to hear. Because that's the trickle-down that will help us.
At training, when we had questions about training, about grading.
They must have thought we were like.
The, the people were like, I'm sorry, no, we're, we're here to talk about math.
And we're like, but what about grading? Like, what about this? And they kept looking at us like.
Nope, that's for, that's for AGR to figure out because we are here to make mathematicians. And they were adamant about it. And we talked with colleagues on the side and you hear a lot of interesting things like middle schools that are standards-based grading. So districts that go standards-based grading like we do in elementary all the way up to eighth grade, that's intriguing. And just all those things, but they were adamant. This is about mathematics instruction. And just divorcing those two things, the grade and the instruction, is a giant shift and it's really exciting.
Huge shift, yeah.
It is a shift.
It's a huge shift.
Well, I'm curious to know, how do you, how do they define what a pass is versus what a fail is? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because I would rather have the surgeon who passes.
Well, they will only be performing surgery if they pass.
But I mean, what means pass?
Yeah.
But I think it's.
How do you determine that? I think it's also teaching kids that just because you got an A doesn't mean the learning that you knew at all. You know, I'll use my oldest as an example. She got a five on an AP, you know, math course, went into college and she was like, well, I got credit for that. So I'm going to skip all that and I'm going to go to this course. And as the math teacher, I'm going, I don't know if that's a good idea, honey. I think you might want to like take Kelp II again. And she's like, no, I got it. And I was like, okay, you do you. She took that upper level math course and she figured out, oh, a five didn't necessarily mean that I knew it all. And she had a, she had a work. And that was a hard lesson for her to learn, but it was also a good lesson, right?
Right, it's a good lesson.
Yeah.
So at least we've had this discussion. And I've actually tutored math and I know other people who have. And let me tell you, you can get the straight A students that were, you know, advanced, accelerated, whatever, they hit a wall. Because there's certain things, there's certain foundational things that they did not get or understand. And there's a new book and there's a new way of doing things because there's a new teacher or whatever. And they all of a sudden hit that wall and go, gee, I was a straight A student, now I stink at math. And they, they, they take that concept and they kind of just hone it in on now they've hit their limit, they're done. They got their maximum number of credits in this space and they don't need that anymore, so they decide they're not going to do it. And they actually turn away sometimes, things that they wanted to do in their careers. And all of a sudden they don't believe they're, they're, they're able to do it, which is pretty false. But it's because without having that circuitous approach, they're not putting it all together. And they, they flush it, like you said, and then they move on and they forget about it. And then it comes up as a baseline of another problem, maybe in calculus, like basic algebra.
Right.
And they can't do it.
Well, and I sometimes will tell students, I'm like, think about how many times you have learned fractions. You were introduced in third grade, I don't know what grade, but you know, fourth grade you saw them, fifth grade you saw them, you know? But why do you think if I show you how to solve an equation, one time I got it? I don't need to see it again. Why are you teaching me this again? Well, there's, there's more there, you know, so.
That is my last question. And so like when you're saying, I, I get my traditional homework and I do my homework and I'm repeating the same thing over and over again. I'm just practicing it, basically. But then they move on and they understand there's a foundational aspect to that. Is the CPM program also, like you have your author's visions, is the CPM program giving the students the tools? Not just, hey, this way works for me and the class taught this way, but they're giving them the tools to actually get to that next level once they're out of your classroom? To be able to try to use those same tools to solve a brand-new problem? We'll see next year when they arrive.
Well, I mean, part of it is, I mean, we hope so. I mean, you know, this is a pilot, so we hope so. I, I hope a bare minimum, it's allowing them to see that when I do get to that productive struggle, I know that that is normal. And so I'm hopeful that this will actually encourage more kids to take advanced math courses at the high school and realize, I can do it. And, you know, struggling is a normal part of that. Because I think right now, some students get to those courses and the minute they struggle, like you said, they want to get out. Because they feel like somehow they're incapable. But I feel like CPM does a really nice job of teaching them tools and ways to solve a variety. And then saying, okay, now we're going to bring around different kinds of problems that you can still use that, that tool on, but.
I think the other thing that's really, really different, and this came up, a lot of my parents at Cooper's are like, well, I don't know about the no homework thing. During a CPM lesson, one of the first training days, they talked about the teacher clock. And you know, your math class is 100% of the time. And in more traditional way, that teacher was talking 25% of the time?
If not.
If not 40% of the time? These learners are doing math for an hour. There's no, today we're going to bump up. Nope, there's a launch and they're into the problem and then they're off and running. I don't think that I really ever talk more than four minutes in a row.
No, because if you just summarize, like, okay, so this is how a variety of people solved it. And then you talk about like, okay, so I have group one who solved it by drawing a picture. I have group two who used algebra. I have group three. And then you might say, okay, well, what are some more efficient ways? The picture works, but are we going to want to draw a picture every single time? So look at how this, this group solved it, but they're more engaged because it's not the teacher saying this is how you solve it. They're seeing like, oh, my peers actually, you know?
And then you'll do it another way, and then you'll do it another way, and then you'll do it another way. And at the very end of that lesson, you're going to get to their reflection and practice. And it's, it's the, essentially the homework part of it. And it's six or seven problems max. And they're from all over the place and they can get it done in 15 minutes if they're really kind of eye on the prize. But the part, I think, when, you know, when you're a parent, you think, okay, well, where's the, you saw how they did it and then you did a few together. Now go home and do 30 on your own. They did the 30 all together. The math class was math, doing math. So it's just, it's a very different twist. It's a very different twist to their time management. It's a much more effective use of their time than listening to a teacher show things on a, on a whiteboard or on a chalkboard. So it's a different, it's a different, it's a, it's a really intentional, good use of their time.
Hey, are there any other questions?
Great.
Thanks so much. Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation for School Social Workers Appreciation Week. And Director Atkinson, could you read that one?
As soon as I get my computer back. Oh, it's totally okay. That's that screensaver thing. Thank you. Yes, I'd have to read it. So March 4th through the 8th is titled School Social Week Workers Appreciation Week. And the theme is We Rise. Heart Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes March 4th through the 8th as School Social Workers Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas the importance of social, school social work through the inclusion of school social work programs and services has been recognized in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Whereas school social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success. Including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, familial stressors, and other barriers to learning. Whereas school social workers are needed more now than at any time in recent memory. Whereas school's social workers are needed more now than at any time in recent memory. Whereas school's social workers maintain knowledge of school culture and school climate. Whereas school's social workers serve as vital members of a school's education team, playing a central role in creating partnerships between the home, school, and community to ensure student success. Therefore, the Pirate Lake Savage Area Schools Board of Education does hereby proclaim the week of March 4th through the 8th, 2024, as School Social Workers Week in recognition of the contributions social workers make in the lives of students. Thank you. I don't know how much I can add to that. We're lucky that we have social workers in all of our K-12 buildings. And they really do serve that role of connecting the community and the home and the school all together. They also meet with probably 100 kids a day, right, to talk through, you know, a stressor that that may be having, maybe check, it's an everyday check and connect situation to help the kid get through the day. They work a lot with our students who might struggle with some behavior and attention. And then just serve as, as a sounding board for our teachers too and how to support our kids. So I'm very grateful. I know I'm up here a lot because I have a lot of little niche groups of, of staff on my staff. And I just wanna thank you for recognizing the social workers along with all the other groups. It's very appreciated and I know it means a lot to them. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to policy. And the first one up is Policy 425. I'm gonna hand this over to Director Herman.
Thank you. So on this policy, the major differences that we added were some title changes to some committees and adding the legal references, but no major structural changes. Did have a question that came in prior to, to the meeting that I'll have Dan talk to in regards to the, the voting on the, the membership for this committee.
Yeah, so a point was made that that is something that we haven't. Staff development, district staff development as a committee has existed in a variety of iterations over the years. And that has never been a committee that has come before the board. That's an internal committee that has taken a variety of shapes. We've had representatives from each level. We've had, as we have moved in our, with our Q-Cop and Teaching and Learning Department and various positions, the level of participation has varied. And so that is not something that we have had come before that I can ever recall coming before the board. We should make, I would recommend a revision to that.
Revision to the policy or?
It was actually one of my questions too. I had the same question because I don't know if there's a roster for, that says that the board approves a roster.
Yeah.
Are you saying there's never, this has never been?
That has not been followed, to my knowledge, in the three years. I've been in the role in years prior. That has never been something that has come before that. It's been a functioning, a, a committee that's functioned on an as-needed basis. And certainly has, well, currently this year, for example, when we've planned our early release days and our two full day PD days, that is something that has fallen primarily on our LAI office team. So our peer coaches, our differentiation specialists, our curriculum specialists, and our principals. And we come together and we plan those days and we create the opportunities for PD based upon what we know our staff, as we just talked about in this previous presentation, what's most pressing. And that's where we focus our time and energy. And we use our built teams at the site level. When we only had one, when we only had three early release days during the year, we, three or four in previous years, we would make the builds responsible for planning those each, at each site. Now that we have those on a monthly basis and we are doing, as I mentioned earlier, the curriculum development work and focusing our time and energy around that or looking at data, as was described by Kristen in the previous presentation, we have given the structure, we being the LAI office have given the structure to that.
So it's my understanding, in practice, the only rosters that have come to the board level are the board committees. The other committees have not been in practice coming forward for board approval.
So something that we would, we would need to rework this language in the policy to reflect that practice.
And probably also reflect that it's more of a man, well, it's a management committee, administrative committee and then, and then more of an as-needed basis. Because it, it feels like, from what you're saying, it's built that works with LAI.
Yes.
Not necessarily in a formal committee, but in a feedback league to help determine what you need. So however you wanna reflect that in the language.
Okay. Do you guys just wanna take this policy back and rework it?
Yeah, we'll rework that before bringing it back to the next meeting. Yeah, so my only question is, is it in there for a reason? Because we have a lot of statutes written here. And so just like the Teaching and Learning Committee, there, that is required committee. And so is this committee required per statute? And that's why it's in policy, or it has been in policy?
Yeah, and actually, there were requirements previous to, that we had to submit to MDE particular reports. Those requirements are not current requirements. So I think this particular policy, and I think we need to do a little more investigating with MSBA on this.
Okay.
Because those are not forms that we have been required to, for some years.
Well, perhaps, yeah, it sounds like we need to go back on this. You know what I mean, to make sure that we're meeting the statutes for.
Yep.
There was also, I had one question as, under reporting A, it states, "The District Staff Development Committee shall prepare a report of the previous fiscal year's staff development activities and expenditures as part of a school district's World Best Workforce Report." And I went back and I watched the World Best Workforce in November and there was nothing stated in there about staff development, what has been done and what it cost in that report. So I'm also curious if that is a Minnesota state statute, something that we should have been doing? Or is it, should it be included in here or not, or?
Yeah, I think we need to review some of these practices because also in this past legislative cycle, the World Best Workforce is also going to likely be changing as well. So those practices, some may carry over, some may sunset. So I think it's, there's, there's sufficient information in here of past practice melded with where we may grow that needs to be redressed to ensure that anything legally bound by statute is adhered to. But then our current practice can also be supported by said statute as well. So I think that's something that we're gonna have to make sure that is thoroughly reviewed before bringing forward as a final approval to the board.
Right, and then even under the next statement, under A1, it says, "The report must include assessment and evaluation data indicating progress toward district and site staff development goals based on teaching and learning outcomes." And so knowing that our district, you know, our number one objective are student outcomes, I think the objective of that part of the policy is to ensure that the staff development that we're putting in place is focused on student outcomes.
I'm gonna make a suggestion that we actually hold this if the board's okay and then let Director Herman and, and Dr. Edwards review it and potentially not have the deadline be the next board meeting and skip to another study session for full review. Simply because there's that, we don't usually discuss in detail this at the board meetings. So is that, and I don't wanna put pressure on the staff to rework an entire policy and all the changes that are going on, let's say with the World's Best Workforce and stuff like that in the, in the short time until our next board meeting. I'm not sure how everyone feels about that.
Has this gone through the policy committee?
Yes.
So I'm curious why these weren't brought up then, I mean, policy committee?
I think that's a great question. So many of these, so the last policy committee, this list was final, the final review at policy committee. And I will say that being new to the policy committee, I transferred all my notes from then to here. And I think that, again, being new to the policy committee, some of these questions I had and I did not submit them. I did not submit them or talk about them at the more, like my questions were flagged to, to reach out, what the budget is, how many members? Like I wrote, I wasn't able to find this on the district website, what is this? And so taking, I, I guess, taking the time as suggested to really look at what, what statutes are supposed to be followed. I think listening to the questions here, my question is, how much of this policy needs to actually be changed? I think it probably needs to go back or, or working.
Yeah, I have a question, looking at, you know, how we do the updates at the end of every policy, like when things were changed or tweaked. This was last July. So I, I, I actually had a question on why we were looking at this again so soon.
I have that on my mind.
But I understand there's changes and things going on to reflect that we have to change it ahead of schedule.
Well, first of all, be prior to the policy committee, we had broken down the policies per the other policy to handle so many. And so by the end of the year, we were supposed to get so many of them done. So thank goodness for the policy committee because it helps us slow it down and do that. This one did make it through, but I'm gonna re-ask to avoid additional conversation because we, we're not going to change it here.
Yeah.
Because there's too much that needs to be done.
Right.
So, and given the amount that needs to get done and given the fact that we do not discuss these in thorough at an actual business meeting, is it okay? And I'm just, give me a thumbs up or whatever if we have Director Herman and Dr. Edwards take a look at this and rework it and introduce it at the following study session.
Yeah.
Fine with that, yeah?
That's a good idea.
Yep. Thumbs up.